Here.
Cartha?
Here. Oh. And then Anya Tanyavidi, who can't join us today, will be calling in later when we move into some of the discussion items. So with that, Lindsay, do you want to do the motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Cartha? Yes. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing on the tax levy. The truth in taxation law requires that the district hold a public hearing on the 2017 aggregate tax levy prior to the board taking action to approve the final 2017 aggregate tax levy. Members of the public are welcome to address the school board regarding the proposed 2017 tax levy during this public hearing. Are there any comments from the public? If there are no comments regarding the tax levy, I hereby conclude this public hearing. The board will be voting for the approval of the tax levy at tonight's meeting. And then we have around 65s. Superintendent, Boardroom, can I start?
I, yes, I do. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I have a few announcements I'd like to share before we get started. This December, actually, it is December, soon in December, students across District 65 will kick off what we're calling Code 65, our very own Hour of Code Challenge. With the help of teachers and librarians, students in grades two through eight will participate in online coding challenges and activities as a fun way to engage in STEM learning. Individual school raffles will be held for students that participate in one or more challenges. In addition, the school with the most overall challenges completed will win $1,000 to donate to their favorite and chosen charity. Challenges can also be completed at home. Code 65 is made possible through a wonderful partnership with Northwestern's Digital Youth Network. Special thanks go to our teachers, to Northwestern, and our partners, Evanston Public Library, Family Focus, YOU, and the YMCA for their support in making this program possible. More information will be posted to our website and shared in our Fast Five eBlast this week. I also want to take a moment to remind our community of several upcoming focus groups that the district is hosting related to our early childhood education programming. Current and former JEH Early Childhood Center families, as well as staff and community members, are invited to share their insights and perspectives as we seek to strengthen and enhance early childhood programming for our 0- to 5-year-old children. The first session for current families, so the first session for current families, will take place this Thursday at 6:30 PM right here in the boardroom. There are also two additional sessions scheduled for Wednesday, December 13, for staff at 4:00 PM, and another one for community members at 6:30 PM. Childcare, light refreshments, and Spanish interpretation will be provided. I want to note that due to the change in our board meeting schedule for this month, our High Five Staff Recognition Program will take place during the working board meeting on December 18th. We look forward to recognizing two more deserving staff members. And before we proceed, I want to say just a few words about the recommendation that the board will consider tonight regarding the expansion of TWE resulting in two strands at Bessie Rhodes. We bring this recommendation to the board after considerable amount of analysis, analysis that has taken place over a four-year period, when we identified the need to expand the number of TWE strands. Our recommendation rests on careful thought my team and I have given to the provision of services for Spanish-dominated children requiring bilingual services so that they can learn English. The recommendation is the best approach educationally to bilingual services. It can meet the needs of the district with regard to an adequate number of TWE strands, and it has the most likelihood of expanding the student population so that our TWE strands are more diverse. I recognize that this sort of change does have a real impact on our families and our educators. I am sensitive to the worries and concerns that have been raised here at board meetings and in our community sessions over the past few weeks. We will work with the Bessie Rhodes staff and with the community as we make the transition, should you, the board, vote in the affirmative for our recommendation. And we will maintain the school's focus on global studies and will continue to offer Mandarin. The recommendation we bring forward tonight has resulted in important community commentary about serving children in Evanston's 5th Ward, particularly African-American children and their families. As I mentioned at our last board meeting, I am committed to working with the board and the community on issues related to families in the 5th Ward and to addressing how the district can specifically serve and accelerate the performance of African-American students from the 5th Ward. As the board, as you can, as a board, as you consider the recommendation tonight, I want to thank those who have come before the board, who have participated in the community and PTA meetings, and who have written opinions and perspectives during this process. The proposal we present tonight reflects input from the community, and it is better because of the input we've received. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any board announcements or comments? I just have a small announcement about, we are going to be holding another board community café this month. It will happen before the holiday break, so be on the lookout shortly for information on when and where that will be happening. Okay, we will move on to public comments. Members of the public are welcome and invited to address the board during open public meetings. The Board of Education will not permit the voicing of personal attacks against any district employee. Please remember to state your name, and that you have three minutes to address the board. At the conclusion of three minutes, you'll hear a timer going off, and we'll ask that you wrap up your comments. Oh, and Manuel, can you make an announcement about translation services?
Buenas noches a todos. Si alguien necesita servicios de traducción al español, si levanta en su mano, me indica y paso a entregarles el equipo de recepción con audífonos. If anybody needs translation services, just let us know. We have the equipment available for you. Gracias. Thank you.
Okay. With that, our first speaker will be Donna Su.
Hi, my name is Donna Wang-Su, and I reside at 9414 Harding Avenue in Evanston. I am a parent at Bessie Rhodes with a kindergartner and a third grader, and I am appealing to the members of the District 65 Board because I know you've been listening to our voices, probably reading all my emails, and I know that at the first board meeting about a month ago, you heard our concerns, and then you voiced your concerns about Bessie Rhodes eliminating the Mandarin program. The proposal was then further revised to keep Mandarin. I am appealing to you because I believe you can influence equity for the Bessie Rhodes students in maintaining the following three pillars that our community really values: stability, global studies, and diversity. So the first one, stability. I think the district needs to fix the problems that the initial TWE communication has caused at Bessie Rhodes. The change management and strategic planning needs to be taken into consideration, and it would be best to do a phased-in transition at Bessie Rhodes with one TWE strand starting in fall 2018. When I ran the numbers, because compliance states TWE classrooms cannot be larger than the gen ed classrooms with the preference to be a 50-50 split for best academic achievement. I actually urge you to look at the numbers I pulled from a District 65 report, for those of you with the handouts, the first chart on page four. Oakton actually has room to add four more English speakers to get to the 50-50. And then that needs to be addressed. And then from what I can see, Dawes and Willard are the only ones with the most inequitable percentages. So for fall 2018, if TWE does come to Bessie Rhodes, you'd be busing roughly 12 students from the Dawes and Willard neighborhoods to Bessie Rhodes. That's enough for one strand to start. If the board decides that TWE proposal at Bessie Rhodes is the best location, I would urge you to consider a transition with a two- to three-year adjustment and assessment period with first one TWE strand before changing it over to two TWE strands. Our number-two pillar is the global studies commitment. To add to the commitment, if the board decides to move TWE to Bessie Rhodes, I would actually like to request two things for the non-TWE students. The first, currently, Bessie Rhodes offers Mandarin for half the year and Spanish for the other half of the year to our elementary school students. My first request would be for the district to provide additional funding to offer Spanish year-round, starting in kindergarten. I think this would actually bridge the gap between the TWE program and the current, and the non-TWE students. And then the second request is for the district to provide additional funding to offer Mandarin year-round, also starting in kindergarten for all students. I think you can see the recommended timeline on page two of the handouts. And then just last year, our PTA fundraised money to hire a consultant to look into enhancement for global studies. Is there continued funding to pay for a consultant to help us incorporate TWE with the current global studies curriculum? And then third, our diversity commitment. Many parents have shared one of the perks of Bessie Rhodes is the diversity of the students, faculty, and administration. One easily trackable commitment is when accepting TWE students, the English-speaking, to the Bessie Rhodes TWE strand is trying to keep up with the current diversity pool. So if we're busing in 11 Spanish-speaking students, we'll have 11 English-speaking. It should be a breakdown of three white, five black, one Asian, and two multiracial students. I understand that you, as a board member, are looking at the big picture and thinking of equity for all District 65 students. I urge you to look again at the numbers and consider why you are doing this, and if this is a true solution, or if this is just a band-aid temporary solution. I also ask you to take these three pillars into consideration if you do choose to move forward with the TWE expansion at Bessie Rhodes.
Thank you. Lauren Gradniki?
I don't have prepared remarks tonight because I am emotionally and mentally and physically drained over this issue. I've tried logic with you, I've tried morality with you, and none of this seems to work. So I just don't know what else to say. I mean, as Donna mentioned, diversity is something that I'm concerned about, and there is, it does not look good for the diversity at Rhodes if you go ahead with the TWE expansion. And just the way the district has handled a bunch of other issues, like the transition to NGSS or the lack thereof, a bunch of things made us decide that if you go ahead and do this TWE expansion, we're leaving the district. And I'll tell you, both my husband and I have PhDs in astrophysics, so we're taking that out of the district along with our kids and all of what that entails, like our dedication to education and our problem-solving ability and our dedication to school community. So we'll take our energy and put it somewhere else.
Thank you. Jonathan Nusma? I'm sorry if I mispronounce. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Nusma, 1408 Dempster. I'm the parent of twin seven-year-olds in first grade at Washington School. And one of the reasons we moved to Evanston before the kids were even born was for the diversity of the community. And one of the reasons we moved to our house in the Washington District is because it was one of the few schools that, at the time, had TWE classes. As it turns out, the kids were born, there were two of them, and we didn't, we weren't planning on looking for a school that had two TWE strands. So we applied before the kids were in kindergarten, and unfortunately, they didn't make it in for kindergarten, but there were some openings late last fall. We had a phone call, had less than 24 hours to decide if we wanted our kids to go into TWE in first grade. So we made the leap, and a few weeks later, our kids, who had always loved going to school, came home crying because they couldn't understand anything. Now we're two and a half months, three months into the school year, and I've been informed by my children not to try and speak Spanish because I don't know what I'm doing. So I just wanted to put in a good word for two-way immersion in general. My family, I don't think, would be affected by what's going on at Bessie Rhodes, but I just wanted to speak in favor of two-way immersion and in favor of maintaining diversity. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Whittington?
My name is Christopher Whittington. My son, Sam Kimony, goes to Bessie Rhodes. What was the other question I needed? Okay. Anyway, Sam was at Oakton Elementary last year, and we really felt like he didn't have the emotional support that he needs. He has a number of issues that really don't require a lot of attention, but they require something, and it was just not possible. I know that Oakton is a large school. At Bessie Rhodes, he is flourish. Well, one thing, every, almost every day, I would say, four days out of the week, Sam would come home crying from school, by the way he was treated, and by the way he felt like the teachers were not taking him seriously, things like that. Since we came here, more than four days out of the week, he said, "I had a great day", and there's so many things he's excited about. But one of the things that really is impress me is, and I think it has to do with the class size, that his teacher has found a way to communicate with him that they write each other, when there becomes an issue, either with each other or with another student, they write each other a letter, and then they figure out the issue that way, and they usually both come away with saying, "You know, we're okay here." Well, will that sort of uniqueness go away? Because I'm quite sure that this teacher and some of the others that I know that offer a lot are not tenure. And so we are potentially looking at losing some really special educators who are willing to sort of go the extra mile to not just cram the subjects, but to also look at the child as an individual and to maybe need some special needs. And I think I'm most upset about what might happen to our non-tenure teachers. And I'm very happy to hear that Mandarin is not going to be taken away. Chinese next to Spanish is probably the most important language for any child to know. So I'm very happy to hear that that, this gentleman said that that is not going to be eliminated. I think I could say a number of things, but we don't want to leave Bessie Rhodes. We don't want to see such an enormous change that it might destroy its culture. And I believe its culture can provide everything that I think we're all looking at with, if I understand the word immersion correctly, with a way of doing it that way. I may not be understanding of immersion, but that's my comment.
Thank you. Hong Wu?
Hi, everyone. I'm Hong Wu, 9236 Central Park Avenue. I have two children at Bessie Rhodes, one kindergartner and one sixth grader. So overall, I have been to two conference meetings before, and this is my third, and I just want to come to the board to share what I feel as a parent about the proposal. First, personally, I actually have read and studied about TWE program. I think it's a very useful tool. However, it's a tool, so it still depends on when, where, who are using the tool to achieve the most efficiency and the best results. And second is, we have been talking about equal education for, actually, this morning, I was looking at the website. It says every child, every day, and whatever it takes. So my first thought was, okay, does everyone, every child include my child? Okay, so obviously, I don't feel the process is involving or concerning the equal education that my child is entitled to. This proposal was announced on November 1st. That was the time, the earliest time I can date back to. And today is December 4th. It's now you're supposed to vote yes or no for the proposal. So as a working mom, I don't think it's fair for us, like, I'm sure lots of parents don't even know. Actually, as a matter of fact, I run into a District 65 teacher at the grocery store on my way back, and I mentioned, I'm like, "I'm going to the board meeting," and she said, "Oh, what for?" I said, "Okay, the district is talking about converting Bessie Rhodes to a TWE program." And she said, "Really? I've never heard about it." So we're talking about a teacher who has been in the district for over 20 years, working. So I think it's unfair to rush the process, and as a parent, I don't feel that I'm getting enough respect as a community member and also a taxpayer. And second is, and also, I think, you know, my child's education experience will be negatively impact. Think about if I were a second-grader teacher or third-grade teacher, I wouldn't wait until you push me out. I would start looking for a position, and I want to get out as soon as I can, okay? Before the positions outside of school were all taken. And I think it will negatively impact the teachers' morale at the school and directly impact my children's education and school experiences. And another one is, I have not heard anything about Plan B. Let's see if the program doesn't work in the middle of the time. Let's say, you know, when you pushed out all the third-graders, teachers, and then you realize somehow the program is not successful, do you have any plan? Do you just say, "Oops, sorry, we messed up two classes or two generations of classes"? What is the plan? And also, I've heard about, okay, we're going to work with the families and parents to help you.
Thank you. Thank you. Alice Berry?
I'm Alice Berry, 1630 Main Street. I am Secretary of Opal's Board. I'm reading a portion of Opal's statement on TWE expansion. Early last year, Opal board members were told about the possible expansion of the TWE program, and tonight, we anticipate the district board voting to convert Bessie Rhodes into a TWE school. While Opal is not opposed to TWE, we have several concerns regarding this proposed expansion and the district's slow progress on the achievement of Black students. One, segregation. District administrators have made the case that TWE is a program that is beneficial for Spanish speakers. How will the TWE expansion further segregate our district? It is not Opal's position that staff should launch into a massive Black student recruitment for the TWE program, given our current bust integration model. Black students already bear the burden of diversifying our schools. Two, teachers. The TWE expansion will send the district out seeking qualified bilingual teachers to fill the classes for several years to come. This will presumably require the district to be creative in its recruitment efforts, while Opal remains frustrated that efforts to increase Black teachers, a request we have made for over two years, has led to the hiring of only five Black teachers. How will the district's human resources meet the needs of a diversified workforce at Bessie Rhodes when there has been no concrete plan on diversified staff District Y? Three, culturally relevant curriculum. With the departure of Principal Hunter, Opal has heard little to no mention of the district's goal to implement culturally relevant curriculum at all schools, which has been requested for years. Despite our request, the work of an organized parent group, and the commitment of administrators, the district has seemingly spent the year working to implement the TWE expansion, while ignoring the need of all students to see and learn the contributions and life experience of their ethnicity in the classroom. In addition, what type of support is the ACC program receiving? Will the district actively recruit students for that resource-starved program as it plans to do for TWE? To reiterate, Opal is not opposed to the expansion of TWE. Our concerns are with the time and resources that have gone into this expansion while the achievement gap widens. Our concern is that the TWE expansion appears to be moving full steam ahead despite parent and community objection. Our concerns center on a district that appears to move with great urgency for some while sending others to task force, consultant, and analysis, often still with no recognizable gains. Bessie Rhodes parents, we share your frustration and encourage you to continue advocating for your students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Rochan?
Mark Rochan, 1836 Hovland Court. I'm just going to read an excerpt of a letter that my wife and I submitted to the Evanston Roundtable a few weeks ago. "Bessie Rhodes has a unique learning community that could best be described as the United Nations of Evanston, based upon the ethnic and cultural diversity of students and their families. We have two children attending Bessie Rhodes, one in first grade and one in second. For the last three school years, we've tried, we have tried to play an active role in the school's community. We have been room parents, PTA members, green team members, and volunteers for numerous school events. Throughout all of these experiences, the one thing that's continually amazed us is the cultural and ethnic diversity of the student, the school's students and families. We're excited and proud of the fact that our children are learning side by side with fellow students whose families come from all corners of the world. They have friends and classmates with families from places like Ethiopia, Chile, India, France, El Salvador, China, and Russia, just to name a few. At Bessie Rhodes, the variety of family experiences gives the school an incredible foundation for learning, which is nurtured and reinforced by the school's global studies curriculum. Given the country's current climate of racial and religious intolerance, we need learning environments like the one at Bessie Rhodes more than ever. As the District 65 School Board prepares to vote on December 4th, we encourage them to keep the current Rhodes students and families in mind. The beauty of the Rhodes, Bessie Rhodes Global Studies Program is that it can be shaped to fit the needs of our Evanston community while maintaining its inclusive and forward-thinking worldview. Help the parents of Bessie Rhodes build an even stronger global studies curriculum. Working together, we can address the growing needs of our native Spanish-speaking students and even incorporate the district's African-centered curriculum. The Bessie Rhodes Global Studies Program should be a model for advancing diversity and equity at other schools in the district. We live in a global world, and our students deserve a global learning experience. Thank you."
Thank you. Alicia Gonzalez?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to share a note from the Chicago Tribune. It starts, "Bilingual program may get one school. Consolidation plan upsets some Evanston parents. Children who live near an elementary school in Evanston would have to attend a different school outside their neighborhood to make room for pupils in a dual-language program under a proposal that has angered some parents. 'We just don't want to lose our school,' said a parent that has studied the issue since June. School officials said they want to expand the program, replacing traditional bilingual methods that have proved less successful. None of the students are here, that are here now, would be affected,' said the principal. Others said they would enroll their children in the program regardless of where it is offered. A parent of two sons who are enrolled in the program agreed. 'I will go where the program goes, but I don't think we'll face any less resistance from other communities.'" This note is from Lisa Black, Tribune's staff reporter, and is dated on February 7th, 2003. "I am here to thank all of you, the Education Board, Dr. Gorn, Dr. Burzley, Mrs. Correa, for your efforts to finally bring the realization of the much-delayed expansion of the two-way immersion program. The percentage of students identified as Hispanic is 19.3%. Compared to the average District 65 student, Hispanic students are 75% more likely to live in low-income households and are about three times as likely to be ELLs. ELL students' right to a quality education is protected under the Equal Educational Opportunity Act, so the district is obliged to provide the needed language services that enable these students' access to the same opportunity to receive an education." enable these students' access to the same opportunity to receive an education. If students cannot understand the language in which they are being taught, they are not being provided an equal education. TUI is a dual-language program. Dual-language programs promote bilingualism and belligerency, grade-level academic achievement and cross-cultural competence in all students. Students maintain their native language while adding another language, and they develop pride in their own culture while developing an understanding of others. It has been proved the best way to bring ELLs to English proficiency with the benefit of preserving their cultural identity. Studies including a national longitudinal study of two-way bilingual programs have also found that language-minority students enrolled in two-way immersion programs attain high levels of academic achievement over the long term than students enrolled in other educational programs within the same district. Currently, District 65 is not able to provide classes with equal numbers of native Spanish and native English speakers. This has been the case since 2008. In April 2014, the district was cited for non-compliance due to the two-way immersion class size being too large in comparison to the general education classrooms. That year, 27 of the 36 TUI classrooms were out of compliance. For these reasons, I trust the Board will vote in the best interest of every student and will hold to the principles of ACT describing District 65 racial and educational ACT statement. I especially thank Ms. Amy Correa and Dr. Stacy Beardsley for spearheading the effort."
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're getting complaints that the people at home cannot hear the sound. Oh, there's somebody who can look into the sound. Watchers at home are unable to hear.
Thank you.
He's fixing it now.
Okay, it's being looked into now. We apologize for the technical difficulties.
We can hear you here, though, Stephanie.
So, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Mendoza, and I live at 823 Seward Street. I have two children in TUI. They both attend Washington School, one is in kindergarten and one is in first grade. And one of my children has an IEP. The TUI program has allowed our family not only to give them the opportunity, both my husband and I, I am the only person in my household that speaks English. Everyone else in my household, including my children's grandparents, speak Spanish. And the TUI program has allowed all of my family members to be able to advocate for both of my children's educational interests in the language that they can understand and in a language that they know that they're giving information that allows them to advocate for them accurately, not by a translator or an interpreter, but by the language that they speak. And that is important. And I'm afraid that there are too many parents in this district that speak Spanish that are not allowed to advocate for their children. I am so happy to see a lot of people here that speak English, that are advocating for the interest of their children. But there are way too many Hispanic or Spanish-speaking families in Evanston that do not have the courage or the proficiency to come up here and advocate for their children. And when you vote tonight, I want you to keep that in mind. Sadly, I did not grow up in a county or in an area that enabled me to be proud of my culture and to be proud of my language. I grew up only learning how to speak English and not knowing how to read or write my language. I grew up with a step in one culture and a step in another culture. I never knew which way to turn. I grew up in a town that didn't make me proud of who I was and the language that I spoke. And I think that interfered a lot with my own identity. And I see the TUI program providing kids, young children, with an identity and allowing them to be proud of who they are and proud of where they came from. And it's also allowing their parents to help them and enable them and push them to further their educations and to go to college and do all the things that their parents were not able to do. I'm happy to see a lot of English-speaking parents here speaking on behalf of their children, but there are also a lot of Spanish-speaking families in this city that are not able to advocate for their children. And when you guys vote tonight, I want you to keep that in mind. There is a very, very large Hispanic population in Evanston. And look at all the people that you see here tonight. The people that speak Spanish in this city are afraid to come up and speak to you because they do not speak the language that you speak. They are afraid that you will not understand them. They are afraid that you will not consider them. And they are in their homes wishing that you will vote tonight, thinking about them, about all those parents that have one-year-olds and two-year-olds and three-year-olds, not the kids that are in school now, but the kids that are gonna come into this district and that are gonna need all of these services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sofia Moreno.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Sofia. Este, pertenezco a la comunidad de aquí de Evanston. Entiendo la importancia que es para nosotros, la comunidad latina, que se nos dé un espacio en una escuela donde se habla español. Yo tengo tres hijos y yo, este, durante estos años, este, mi inglés no es muy bueno y siempre... Okay. Yeah.
My name is Sofia Moreno.
Entiendo la importancia de que tengan espacio para nosotros, los latinos.
I understand that you have the necessity of having a place for us Latinos.
Yo pertenezco aquí a la comunidad de Evanston.
I belong to the Evanston community.
Tengo tres hijos, nacidos y creados aquí.
I have three children born right here.
Y durante estos años he estado siempre con esa preocupación de que a veces tengo que hablar con un maestro o el director y tengo que esperar para alguien que venga a traducir mis necesidades.
And through all these years, I have this, I've been worrying about waiting for somebody to come and help me when I have the need to talk to a principal or a teacher.
Y siempre con la preocupación de que tiene que escuchar una tercera persona mis cosas personales íntimas, que a veces no estoy muy a gusto y me gustaría tener una conversación bien con un maestro o con el director, que solamente sea entre esa persona y yo.
And I've always worried about somebody else, a third person, listening to my personal things. I always wished that I could have that conversation in a face-to-face situation only with a teacher.
Y termino por no decir todo lo que tengo que decir.
And I'm gonna finish here because I want to say more, but there's no time.
Entonces, para mí sería fantástico que hicieran un lugar para nosotros, los latinos, aquí en Evanston.
It would be fantastic that if you can, you could create this special place for us, the Latinos.
Y eso ayudaría a nosotros, los padres, a entender más a los maestros y entender más a nuestros hijos en cuestión de todo, en educación personal y en educación de estudios.
That would help us, our parents, to understand better the teachers in terms of education, studying academics and everything.
Entonces, pues yo apoyo el sistema que están...
So I support the system and the program that you are considering.
Sería fantástico para nuestra comunidad latina, creo que sería el primer lugar...
It would be fantastic for...
...que hubiera todo en español para nuestra comunidad.
It would be fantastic for our Hispanic community to have this place where everything would be in Spanish.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment portion. We will move on to our proposed action items. Lindsay, you have another.
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the appointments and leave the October 2017 Board of Education meeting minutes, destruction of the November 2015 closed session audio recording, and the district-wide gift.
Is there a second?
Second. Cohen?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. Motion carries six-zero. Rebecca?
I move that the Board of Education approve all resolutions and certifications pertaining to the 2017 tax levy.
Second.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. Motion carries six-zero. Approval of TUI site selection. Do we have any commentary?
Well, we have a presentation.
Okay.
But to move it first and...
Oh, do we have to move it first? Oh, um, so, well, okay. Joey, if you could read the motion, and then we'll move into the presentation.
I move that the Board of Education approve the addition of two TUI strands to the Bessie Rhodes School of Global Studies.
Okay, and then, Dr. Beardsley?
Second.
Oh, second, sorry.
Second. I'll second.
Stacy Beardsley is going to do a presentation on the recommendation that we are bringing forward.
Thank you and good evening. First, I want to open and just say thank you to all of the speakers tonight and the comments that were made. We enter this work with a clear understanding of the challenges, and we really appreciate all the comments and the commitment of the individuals that are here tonight, because everybody who is here is here to advocate for the best behalf of their children. And so we appreciate voices and we appreciate understanding and participation in this process. This evening, I am essentially going to review aspects of the recommendation and the proposal so that we're all in a shared understanding around what we are voting on tonight. So, good night, or excuse me, good evening. Not good night yet, good evening. Tonight, as we are asking, we are asking that you vote on our recommendation to expand the two-way immersion program for the 2018-19 school year by adding two TUI strands to the Bessie Rhodes School of Global Studies. We strongly believe that this recommendation is the right recommendation for many reasons, which I will review in this presentation. Should you approve the recommendation, we understand that there's potential to have a significant impact on the Rhodes community, and we're committed to working with school leadership, teachers, and families to make sure that the addition of TUI is a positive and impactful change for the Bessie Rhodes School community. As I've mentioned tonight, I'll just walk through briefly TUI and a little bit of history to respond to one of the comments tonight. I will detail a little bit more of the recommendation. The recommendation stands as it was presented to the Board in our previous meeting, and then we'll just touch base on some of those key discussion topics that people have raised. In quick review, the important thing to know about two-way immersion, which is a dual-language program, is that it's a program that's serving both of our native Spanish speakers and our native English speakers in District 65. And an essential element that has been brought up by our public comments tonight is that we do have a balance of Spanish-dominated and English-dominated speakers in our classrooms. And this is something that is not currently in place for us. I think other key pieces to understand about two-way immersion is that absolutely the goals are high academic achievement for all students, high levels of bilingualism and bili literacy, and increased cultural competence. One addition piece on this, two-way immersion, there was a comment tonight that said, what if we get a couple of years in and it's not working? This proposal is based on hard work that has been done by many of our TUI educators in District 65 since 2001. District 65 made a commitment to two-way immersion programming in 2001, and we are currently offering six strands in five schools. When we talk about the recommendation that we're bringing forward tonight, our recommendation requests that we add two strands of two-way immersion to the Bessie Rhodes School of Global Studies, starting with the kindergarten classes in the 2018-2019 school year. Two strands are necessary to get the distribution of Spanish-dominated, English-dominated students back to 50/50. In 2016, we had 84 native Spanish speakers in our six two-way immersion strands. That left our classes very significantly out of balance. It is necessary for us to get to these eight strands in order for us to be at a place to be back at our 50/50 balance. This balance benefits our Spanish-dominated and our English-dominated students. Currently, we're not implementing the TUI program in a manner which delivers the best results for our children. We have a higher percentage of, for our children. Balancing the classrooms improves the learning environment and should strengthen learning outcomes for both groups. Each year that we delay doing this results in another cohort of students will cycle through six years of TUI programming without the best possible learning model. To be clear, two-way immersion is about the language of instruction, not the content of instruction. The vast majority of the curriculum is the same, regardless of whether students are in TUI or not. There have been concerns that students will no longer learn about cultures or countries that are not Spanish-speaking. This is not true. Spanish is the language of instruction, not the curriculum. We are still absolutely able to celebrate the diversity of a community. We are still able to hear the feedback from our community. In the process of listening to the community through the last month, we removed from our recommendation the possibility of eliminating Mandarin. Mandarin and Spanish will continue to be offered from second grade forward. Minimal adjustments will be made to the current model of language study at Bessie Rhodes. One possible exception is that we will investigate, with input from the school and families, the possibility of offering Spanish in grade one next year to facilitate a greater learning connection between our kindergarten students and our first-grade students. This request has been made by the Bessie Rhodes community. Additionally, the proposal contains additional funds to support Bessie Rhodes community engagement and to strengthen the Global Studies model while keeping a specific lens for including the Black student experience. Lastly, we will bring recommended policy adjustments to the February policy meeting that will include, but not be limited to, preferencing of younger siblings for current Bessie Rhodes students. We are also reviewing several possibilities that may lead to increased student diversity among the English-dominated students in our two-way immersion program. As we've discussed before, District 65 has engaged in a lengthy process to arrive at the Bessie Rhodes site recommendation. We established a need for expanding the TUI programs. Our need is balanced in four key areas. We have a need from our native Spanish speakers. We have a demand from our dominant English speakers. We have approved program efficacy locally and from national and international research. And the two-way immersion program, since it builds on the assets of all of our students in a two-way immersion classroom, is closely connected to our equity initiative. We've engaged district and community stakeholders to define selection criteria. In that process, one factor that really received significant weight, both through the equity walk and the district equity report, and feedback from parents, was our need to work on breaking down isolation in our two-way immersion strands. We evaluated all school sites serving K-5 students, including elementary and magnet schools, using the criteria that we developed with feedback. And based on this review, Bessie Rhodes was found to be the best site for expanding the two-way immersion program for the following reasons. There is strong alignment between the goals of the two-way immersion program and the Global Studies focus. We have opportunities to create a wall-to-wall dual-language program that truly embraces the diversity, not only of our Spanish-dominated speakers, but our Spanish, or native, or dominant Spanish speakers as well. We have an opportunity to meet the needs of families and students, as brought up tonight in some of the public comment. We also have the opportunity with Bessie Rhodes to have a preference area in the Fifth Ward, which is an area in the city that is disproportionately Black and Latinx in population. We have an opportunity to address a growing population of native Spanish speakers in North Evanston. We have an opportunity to start both strands simultaneously and to eliminate some of the challenges around isolation. And that's isolation for families, but also for our teachers. The opportunity to work with another teacher at the same grade level strengthens the implementation of the program and better supports the teachers that are leading the program. And we have an opportunity to more fully maximize enrollment at Bessie Rhodes. Additionally, in the recommendations tonight that I'm asking you to support, we are committing to addressing, to taking a look at our policy 732... to addressing some, to taking a look at our policy 732 and to ensure that Bessie Rhodes families do have preference. We are also evaluating possibilities for increasing other pathways for greater diversity within our English-dominated speakers. We are allocating funds for curriculum revision to deepen the curricular connection between the TWE program and the global studies model. These funds are being set aside to the, for the school to focus on the global studies model and these funds can touch and impact students whether they are part of the two-way immersion program or not because we are interested in the overall strength of Bessie Rhodes School and the two-way immersion program. We do not see one as taking resources away from the other. We see them building with each other and growing and strengthening opportunities at Bessie Rhodes. We also commit to strengthening outreach on the two-way immersion program to the Black community. This is fueled by some input and feedback that we have received through our process of doing phone outreach with families, Black families that are connected to the two-way immersion program, who have provided input on ways and strategies in which they believe would be helpful in raising awareness for the program so that families that may be potentially interested and feel they could benefit have awareness of the program and access to the program should they choose to apply. We're committed to maintaining the current foreign language design with that one exception I just mentioned and certainly maintaining Mandarin. And we've allocated family engagement transportation funds. We understand that in this process, and should this recommendation be supported tonight, going forward, that work is going to need to be done with the Bessie Rhodes community, leadership, faculty, and staff. But these are funds that are set aside going forward so that we may hopefully recover and strengthen the school community and move ourselves to a better and stronger place than we have been. The financial impact has not changed. These are the numbers that remain the same in our recommendation. The additional topics that we were asked to speak to a little bit in the last meeting were around educator and staff support for transition. It's important to understand that transition of staff will be a gradual process that spans over several years. There is no plan to reassign classroom teachers other than staff members before it is necessary. We are committed to making every reasonable effort to place teachers at their current grade level. However, we can't guarantee that a teacher would be reassigned to that grade level. In addition, if a teacher is reassigned to a different grade level, we will commit support in order to help them make that transition successfully in a manner that is, that is, in a manner that is supportive of their success. Potential enrollment implications, we have done a full analysis. Again, as I said last meeting, our goal and hope will be to work with the Bessie Rhodes community to maintain as many of the Bessie Rhodes families as we possibly can because we believe that you are an asset to the school community and we do believe that through working together, we can implement this, the two-way immersion program at Bessie Rhodes in a manner that is strong. We have done the analysis, however, and if families do opt to leave, our research accountability and data team is confident that they can manage any enrollment shifts using conventional measures that they use today. Site selection, we've previously discussed. We did do a thorough analysis. We know at points, we want to break down the isolation of our other two-way immersion strands, but for the reasons that we've articulated in the previous board meeting, there were barriers to entry in those particular locations, either the necessity to pull a school out of being a neighborhood school or because it would have created isolated, further isolated strands. And then lastly, and certainly not out of least importance, is the conversation of global studies. In taking a look at global studies and certainly hearing from families about perhaps how the schools or parents' definition of global studies may vary from the way in which we understand it, we strongly believe in looking at the model and talking to the school and understanding the model that has been adopted from the global studies parent group in Bessie Rhodes, that the two-way immersion program strongly supports the quadrant around communicating ideas in global competencies. Specifically, this area talks about the fact that in a global studies school where we're developing global studies competencies, students should be developing language proficiency in two or more languages. This provides an opportunity for our students that are native Spanish speakers and native English speakers to be studying English and Spanish from the very first day of kindergarten for nine years. And so, it's an opportunity that is unparalleled with what we offer currently in District 65 and provides great opportunities for students to choose to engage in the program. Additionally, communicating ideas talks about understanding and the ability to communicate across cultures. And this provides, again, the experience right within the classroom, as has been the case at Bessie Rhodes currently, and we want to build on that opportunity. Should this recommendation be supported, these are our next steps in District 65. We will engage school leadership, teacher leadership, and parent leadership to develop a transition plan and implementation model that addresses needs of multiple groups of stakeholders. We understand and we're happy that there are as many people engaged in here and the goal, should this be approved, would be to continue to hear those voices and develop a plan that can allow us to move forward in a strong manner at Bessie Rhodes. We'll provide opportunities for Bessie Rhodes families to learn more about the TWE program. There are opportunities to visit other schools that have TWE strands, to see TWE classrooms, and to get a feel for whether this program could be a good fit for younger siblings and members of the school community that would be entering at the younger grades. We'll conduct outreach to native Spanish-speaking families and Black families to inform them about, to inform program improvement and recruitment, and that is ongoing with the team currently. We'll partner with our research accountability and data team to propose a revised two-way immersion English-speaking selection policy. We'll recruit students for program, for the program at the selected site. We'll move forward at reviewing and purchasing instructional materials. And as we've discussed previously, we will move to develop a multi-year plan to address English language learner programs, which may well then address the isolation of the remaining TWE strands in the future years. Thank you, and are there questions?
Thank you very much. Would you like to open it up for any questions from the Board?
I have one really quick question, actually, and that's just on the, the teacher piece of this all. Do you have any sense as to what the typical attrition is in any given grade throughout the district?
The, I do, are you asking what a typical rate would be by grade? I do not have that information.
The reason I'm asking is that, right, there's going to be two teachers a year that are impacted from Bessie Rhodes, and so, are there likely two second-grade openings every year in the rest of the district?
And that's why, you know, we are going to work to the best possibilities to place teachers in the same or adjacent grade levels, but we cannot, even if there was a pattern of two per grade, there's nothing to say that there'd be two per grade this coming year. So, that's not a promise that we're comfortable making.
And we'll also honor our contractual agreements and make sure that those teachers, the teachers who are tenured will especially.
And I think it's important to understand, too, that schools with their teachers, and Bessie Rhodes would have the same process of hiring teachers in, have a significant say in how they, they fill their particular positions.
Understood, thank you.
And I also did, Anya Tanyavidi has joined us by phone. Anya, can you hear us? Oh, do we need to unmute her if she wants to? Oh, okay. Go ahead, Candace, then.
So, I just had a question about the, you referred to options to increase diversity in terms of a policy of non-Spanish-speaking students. Do you have any more description of that or what it might look like coming forward to policy at this point?
So, I, what, we are, we want to hold on that until February to make sure that we have, we are in a position where we're bringing forward a policy that's addressed potential causes and concerns. We know that we will bring forward a recommendation that younger siblings at Bessie Rhodes would be accepted ahead of the TWE siblings and other options within our preferencing right now. The other option I want to hold off on until we've had really an opportunity to finish our collaboration.
Okay. And then, this, the other question I have, it just relates to some of the comments from Ms. Sue and just understanding what is, what we have today versus what those requests were. So, around, around Mandarin, the request was full year versus part year, and so, if you can, and like, just refresh my memory on what that really would be, what's the differential there?
Our original proposal removed Mandarin. We restored Mandarin at the current staffing levels. The, and where that, that, the way the model is currently, students receive Mandarin instruction half-year, so a half-year Mandarin instruction and a half-year of Spanish instruction in second through sixth grade. And then, students opt to specialize in one of those two in seventh and eighth grade.
Oh, okay.
And we would maintain a similar, similar model. The one exception is currently the first graders have arts enrichment for their fifth period rather than a language, and I think we take a look at expanding Spanish into that first-grade space so that all students in the school, kindergarten through eighth grade, actually kindergarten through sixth grade and then seventh and eighth graders who opt for Spanish are having a shared learning experience focused on the Spanish language. And second through eighth grade would have the option of having Mandarin as well. Second through sixth would all have Mandarin.
So, currently, second through eighth have Mandarin half-year?
That is, second through sixth have Mandarin half-year.
Half-year. And that's, is that one day a week or multiple, how many, just, what's the allocation?
Second through fifth, it's, it is one day a week. And then, sixth grade, it's half-year, half-year, every day of the week.
Right, right, okay. All right, thanks. And then, the other question, again, to the requests around commitments to, you know, kind of the cultural programs, again, I'm just not privy, what the commitment today is in terms of finance related to the China trip, like, I, what, what do we provide today and from a district level versus, so we understand what would be changing, if anything?
So, the, so, the current curriculum as it's written did not, does not have the China trip within it and some of those experiences. That has been in addition and the school would need to continue and certainly in partnership to determine, do we continue trips? And if so, where do they go? There's nothing in this proposal that would remove that opportunity. There's nothing in this proposal that specifically addresses that opportunity because that has been kind of a site-specific action as opposed to a district-curricular decision.
And is that a site-specific action that is funded by site funding, that is funded through the district or purely fundraised?
My understanding is that there are no district funds that fund, that support those trips.
All right, thanks. Oh, then my last question, and this probably is kind of a loaded one, too, but, and then some more comments later when we come to conclusions, but in terms of the next steps about developing a multi-year plan, clearly that has implications on attendance area mapping, it has implications on discussions that have been, really important discussions have been raised here about busing and Fifth Ward, busing of Fifth Ward students. So, is, at this point, do you have any idea of timeframe for that and/or when would we, when would we learn about timeframe, general timeframe, so we can, you know, kind of start that process and share it with the community that, because it's going to take quite a bit of time, right?
The, so, I think it's important that we work in collaboration with some of the other aspects of work that you just mentioned. Our goal is to have an initial draft around the longer-term location of two-way immersion strands within the next six to 12 months, but we want, we will plan on working in a small group with principals and other folks to begin that discussion, but we'll need to see the pace of other work things, including potential conversations around district attendance boundaries to determine when the end, end deadline is for that work.
And we'll be starting a process on district attendance boundaries in the spring. Peter will be leading as we move forward, both at the end of this year and into the year to come.
So, requests just would be that, I think, as we go down, start down that path from the beginning, start talking about the process, the approach, and the timeframes, and, you know, to the extent of community engagement, et cetera, would be extremely helpful because that, too, will be a very impactful prospect.
Yeah, very much understood. I appreciate that.
I know you just said it, but I'm going to ask again to make sure that I heard it.
Okay.
Within the next six to 12 months, there's going to be a broader, long-term plan shared that has to do with addressing some of the other needs that we know exist in TWE, like the isolation, possible consolidations, maybe expansion to middle school, things like that.
The, so, yes, as far as the existing K-5 strands, we'll begin also looking at middle school. I'm not set yet to put a deadline on when that work will be at a point because we also do have some analysis around HR and certifications, things along those lines that we will need to look at.
Yeah.
Workflow-wise, I think, understanding long-term location around TWE strands is first because that then can inform where you would initially lift kind of the beginnings of a dual-language middle school, depending on where the largest number of TWE strands end up matriculating.
Yeah, I think, just in the broader context, and I don't know if we're close to, like, general comments and discussion, if Stacy could sit down, because not all the questions are necessarily for her, but fixing the parts of TWE that are out of compliance, the balance, I mean, ideal TWE goes through eighth grade. You're talking about something that's much bigger than the decision tonight, and I think it's important, especially for, for us to think about, like, for the people that felt like this has been a quick turnaround, like, there's a lot of research going into a much broader conversation on how we strengthen language development, biliteracy, overall structure and streamlining of programming.
Yes.
And so, that six to 12 months doesn't even get us to a recommendation to solve all of that, but that's part of what you guys are working on.
And I think it's important to understand that this recommendation is completely complementary to all of that work and that this is a long-term decision to create an absolutely excellent, strong model for a wall-to-wall dual-language school that will benefit our students. And so, that is, this work is complementary and long-term.
And in reference to a comment you made just a second ago in answering one of Candace's questions, in reference to the site selection and looking at other sites and how looking at other sites meant thinking about possibly having to remove a neighborhood school as an element, I think it's just fair to acknowledge, this, this is taking what is a school of choice and, and changing what that choice mechanism is. And I think we've heard a lot of emotion, we've heard a lot of comments that are coming from a place that makes sense, right? Especially if you chose a school under one for one reason and that's being changed. But that was in concert with a lot of other considerations that had the same implications in other parts of the community that weren't as complimentary to whatever's to come as well.
Right. We do clearly understand that there is impact, there, there is impact, positive and negative, at any school at which we would have added these strands. Going to Bessie Rhodes is the decision that we believe strongly is in the best interest of students and we believe it has the conditions for the best outcomes and opportunity for the two-way immersion program. In regards to shift in program, if, if there are families that are considering Bessie Rhodes in the future, we are offering a two-way immersion global studies program. And so, it does augment and does, you know, depending on your, your viewpoint, it either augments or narrows whether you think that program fits your child well. For the students that are currently enrolled at Bessie Rhodes, we will continue to offer a global studies program and also one where we are committing some additional funds to strengthen that model and strengthen family engagement.
And it's worth, again, underscoring that this is a process that will go year by year, starting in kindergarten this coming year, if you so approve it, and then first grade the next year, kindergarten first, kindergarten first, second, year by year. So, it's a, it's a, it is a transition. So, the heartfelt feelings that we've heard and that we, we feel are, are there, and yet the transition is one that's incremental over time.
And last one for me, and it's more of a staffing question and not so much managing the staff that are there who are anticipating change, but is there an opportunity for the Rhodes community, should this pass tonight and there be a kindergarten option? There's this idea, we've heard from several community members, that, you know, recruiting teachers for these positions is challenging. Is there a way to bring in people that are already a part of our TWE community that are experienced teachers into these spots that can help build the strongest possible program in that space so that this isn't a year after year going to find new people?
So, the, what we would be looking for is bringing a minimum of one person who is already in District 65, working in our two-way immersion program over to Bessie Rhodes to operate as kind of an anchor for that grade level. So, even if that second-grade level teacher is new to District 65, we've got somebody who is connected to the existing District 65 program. We do have teachers, we do have individuals in the district who have said that they're excited about the opportunity, and our hope would be that, should the Board choose to support this recommendation tonight, that we would begin conversations with support this recommendation tonight, that we would begin conversations with people about whether they're potentially interested and willing to come, you know, to invest in helping us build this and build this very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move off from the, I do just want to clarify too, the whole idea around the timeframe or on the next steps and looking at what to do about the isolated TWE strands and also the district attendance boundaries. It sounded to me like we were talking about that as two distinct, you know, looking at two distinct projects. I would urge you, the team
They're connected.
To, yeah, that they are connected and to really look at them at this
Which is why we need to be vague on the timetable.
Okay, no.
We need to know these things do connect
Got it.
And be engaged together in conversation.
Okay. Thank you. No, that was what I wanted to clarify. Sergio, it looked like you had some...
I thought we were going to have, is Anya able to speak?
Oh, is Anya?
Is Anya on there?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Anya, do you want to go ahead and say some comments?
Can I hear you?
Ah, great. Thank you. We can hear you.
Okay. Great. So, yeah, I apologize for not being able to be in attendance for this important conversation, but I am glad that I'm able to participate via phone. I cannot hear the entire conversation clearly, so I'm going to just share my particular thoughts and if they're out of context, I apologize. So my thoughts have, my thoughts and feelings have continued in the same vein in which I have shared at our previous, in our previous conversations. I am happy to see the progression of, I think, a thoughtful and honest conversation that's helping us to ensure that we're offering a really rich proposal that I believe is responsive. Whether or not it includes all the content that everyone wants to see is, it's clear that it's not going to meet every single wish, but I do appreciate that we're having an honest community conversation about how to bring the best proposal forward and I have seen the proposal being rich from those conversations. So, but I do, my thoughts have gone to thinking about if the proposal is to move forward, what are the ways that we will monitor the progress on the proposal as a board? So that's the vein that my questions here are operating from. One of them is I want to keep an eye on the enrollment at Bessie Rhodes and how families are being supported in staying with Bessie Rhodes and having a voice in that transition process, but also if families choose to find other home schools or school homes, how we are supporting as a district in transitions that are happening in that vein for the culture and climate of both Bessie Rhodes as well as the culture and climate of any schools that are receiving the students and families and how students and families are feeling supported in their transition at Bessie Rhodes or in the new school, school home. I'm also interested in how we monitor the application of the culturally relevant curricular adaptations and the building of those and the culturally relevant culture and climate decisions that are being made and the stakeholders who are engaged in that process and their voice around that as well. I would like for, if the proposal passes, that we as the board also find some time to talk before the beginning of the 2018, or the 20, yeah, the 2018 school year, about the strategies for outreach to Black families as well as just the general progress in diversifying the English-speaking pool that applies to TWE and what the, how successful the outreach and diversification of that pool, that work is going. And I think also being intentional that we are including our Spanish-speaking parents and students and our TWE teachers in the transition discussion if the proposal were to move forward. And lastly, I think I heard this being spoken to, that progress on the restorative work with all stakeholders in terms of folks being able to have the opportunity to hopefully have expressed feelings but also restore any relationships or harm that has taken place in this discussion because I think a lot of feelings and a lot of experiences have been rooted up, which is important, but also on some occasions those may have intentionally or unintentionally harmed a person or a group of people that I think, how we as an institution and as a community look to restore when those things happen is really an important testament to our values as a district and a community. The other thoughts I had were just making sure that we're also, don't ignore the other conversation that has come up alongside this conversation that I don't think can be completed with this conversation, which is how we're looking to organize community leaders and our institution and thinking about fifth ward students having a school at proximity to their home to attend. I think that that is all of my notes. I also forward them on, so if I've forgotten anything, please feel free to share or just ask that they can, can be part of the consideration. Thank you all.
Thank you. Were there other, yeah, good to do, were there other questions or comments?
So Stacy, I just wanted to ask you, you know, the State Every Student Succeeds Act Plan was approved a couple of months ago and part of a provision for English learners is that, again, we're going to, the Cutscore, right, to determine whether child exits an English learner program has been raised, right? And I wonder if you're aware about that and how you see this expansion being a possible means to address, again, we're going to have to track students, I think we used to track them for three years, now we're going to track them for five years to make sure, even after they exit the program, to ensure that, again, the services they received actually are working and really prove the research that has been, that you've pointed out. How do you see having a TWE, a wall-to-wall TWE as a way to addressing this?
The, so we were absolutely aware of that shift and we did a full analysis over the summer and made sure that we were adequately staffed to meet all the requirements of the, you know, all the requirements around that, around that law. The, I would say, you know, the wall-to-wall two-way immersion program, our belief and what research says is that this will be a model that benefits a full range of learners regardless of learning needs and will create an environment that elevates and values a range of languages and cultures. And so when we do talk about doing the adequate work to have our students exit based on access score and then maintaining support, it would be an environment where the adults in that building know those students over nine years and have an opportunity to really intimately understand their families, their language acquisition, their journeys as students. So I see it as being a highly supportive model that should allow students regardless of language background to be very successful and to exit meeting the requirement, you know, meeting essentially those dual-language goals that we opened our conversation with tonight.
With the assumption that we're fully implementing TWE at full faith and full fidelity, which is the fifty-fifty balance.
Yep.
I think that's it, my question.
Okay. Any more comments now? I did wanted to go back to something that Anya talked about that I think is important, the, how do we monitor progress on this and especially through the transition because I think that it will be worthwhile. I know we have, you know, full board agendas already through the year, but I think it would be important if we could take some time to check in later on in the school year to see how the transition is going, how stakeholder engagement has been conducted, what, enroll, I mean, I just want to clarify something too. I think you said that in the February policy meeting, we'll discuss the enrollment, selection criteria. Is that?
That would be adequate for this year because we would allow pending, your approval of recommendation tonight, we would move forward for making Bessie Rhodes TWE an option for kindergarten applications this winter into spring. And then we actually fill those seats in kind of the May-June window of time. So that would give us adequate time if we brought it to policy in February and we got action on it. We have a February and an April policy meeting. So if we brought it to policy in February, we could have action on it in late February or early March. If we needed to refer, return to policy in April, we'd still be okay on timetable.
Okay.
So the goal would be to have revised policy, any revisions or shifts in place for the upcoming selection for next year.
Okay. So we could then later in the spring have, if we created an agenda item around monitoring the progress, we could have some info on how that outreach is going and what, what kind of enrollment numbers we're looking at as well as what we're looking at. I would think that maybe by then we'd have some preliminary understanding of what's happening with current families with respect to transition, maybe, no?
It depends on the timeline. We would open, I think this year our kindergarten information nights are in February and shortly thereafter we open the application process. So we could certainly provide an update on current families, we could provide an update on the number of applications that we were receiving. And then we actually do the selections in May and in June and that really, it's hard to estimate before then because it has to do with the class sizes both at Bessie Rhodes but also at the schools where we'd be selecting students. So we could certainly provide some update about what's happening with applications and whether that's different from past years.
Okay. Okay. So I think, is there anything else that I was missing from that list that people would want to see in a, in a progress update later in the spring?
I think the only piece that I would be concerned is the communication that we are sending out, not only to the people that will be impacted by such a decision, but we've heard from, you know, various sources that teachers within our district didn't know about this and that people just didn't, didn't have a sense of the timeline. And I think that it's important for, you know, moving forward to really like look at this as, as one program and everybody in TWE should be informed of the decisions that are made, even if it's not directly impacting their school. And I think that's directly related to monitoring. You know, one of the things that we've talked back in August at the very first, you know, discussions of this decision was, you know, where is our TWE program and how are we monitoring and how are we ensuring that in addition to the, to the balance of the classrooms, that we really are serving all those kids to the best of the ability that, you know, that we can as a school district? So in terms of communications, I think that we, we've learned a great deal through this, through this experience.
Yeah, thank you. And I think one actual other thing that I, important part that I forgot to include on monitoring is progress on restorative work, which clearly I think we've all recognized the need for some restorative work to take place at Bessie Rhodes. So if we could make sure that we get an update on what's happening and how that's going, that would, I think, be helpful. Is there anything else that I am missing from that list? Are there any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to make, separate from questions so that Stacy could sit down. And I unfortunately wasn't at the last meeting and in this magnitude of a decision, I think it's important kind of state where we're, where we as individual board members are coming from and, and the basis of our decision-making. And so first, I want to thank everybody here who has been involved in this process. I mean, the level of parental analytics is really impressive as well as input from a heart and also from, you know, your thoughts on what the right thing is to go forward. And a special thank you to Susannah tonight for speaking. Is it Susannah?
Sophia.
Sophia, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Mendez.
Oh, Stephanie, sorry.
The two ladies there. Because I think it epitomizes, you know, really it is, our role is to make a decision here based on the voices we hear, based on the voices we don't hear directly, but, you know, in conjunction with all the things we know about what we want for children and families in our district. And I think you represented that extremely well, both of you, and so I appreciate that. And to thank this team because I think while this process does seem hastened by some, having been here since 2013 and talking about the, you know, disproportional balance and how we need to address that, this is not a Band-Aid. This, in my mind, this is not a Band-Aid. This is a really critical step that we have to take next. And then there are other steps that we also have to take to continue the growth of the program. I look back at some data, you know, TWE was started in 2001. In the year 2000, we had 3% of our students were English language learners and we now have over, about 13 or over 13%. So clearly this is a growth in our, in our school system, in our community and in our larger culture and community that we want to embrace. And I think the model, we have a lot of evidence that this is the best model to ensure that our students are getting the best supports they need and that their families are getting the best supports they need. And I also think there's been a lot of both, you know, empirical evidence of that, obviously outside the district from studies, but evidence with, from within our district and in the success of the program relative to other ESL supports. And, and from our teachers who are saying that they want this kind of expansion and a wall-to-wall program really will give the opportunity for a fully holistic program that respects culture and brings by literacy, I think, to a new, new level for us. And so I'm very excited about that. I think the realities here are that we have to add two new strands as soon as we can. We have to. And we also know, based on our, on the research we've done in our schools, in the schools now, we don't want to extend isolation, so we don't want to add new single strands to have isolated strands. And if we add two strands at any of our other schools, that would be a full conversion of a, of a neighborhood school. There is disruption any way we look at this and it's really challenging. I do think though this is the best solution for us as we go forward as a full school district and, and for the individual schools. I mean, I think it's exciting, I know there are trepidations, but I think it's very exciting for, for Bessie Rhodes and I think we've said that in the past. So I just wanted to offer kind of my thinking and my rationale for the decision to go forward because I think it's important for you all to understand as, as you, you know, you vote for us and we represent you. I do think that the next steps here are going to be, you know, as Suni and Anya had already stated and others, looking at the long-term plan and also looking at how we calibrate as we go forward. And, you know, some of the conditions for success, this has been extremely well thought of. Adding one strand right now in, either in Bessie Rhodes or any other school is not going to fully optimize the value of this program. There's not going to be the learning. And that, to me, having done a lot of change initiatives in other environments, that is really critical so that, and I applaud the team that they've thought through that element as much as possible because I think it's wonderful to be able to take the experience learning of some of our TWE teachers in other programs. They're excited about, you know, being part of the growth of the program and to have that fuel the growth of the program and have people to be able to learn from one another. I do think that that will, ultimately will result in even, even more impressive program than we, than we have today. So I think the conditions for success, which is something that we have to think about, are there and we have to tend it, care for it and, and also work as we, we have challenges along the way because it's not going to be perfect and be that in that together. And I think that's where it's been good to have the, the back and forth and from the Bessie Rhodes community as well on what kinds of, of changes could make this more palatable. So, so that's just, that's where I stand and I actually am extremely excited that we are finally making this decision to grow the program. And I would say it's overdue, but I think it's been put together thoughtfully and will set us up for, you know, for real success down the road, so.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any final comments before the vote?
Unos comentarios en español. Les quiero dar muchas gracias a todos los padres que han llegado aquí.
Les quiero dar muchas gracias a todos los padres que han llegado aquí a esta junta. Y este, están invitados todos. Tenemos traducción para mi, para mi hija latina que tenemos aquí en, en este, en Evanston. Tienen un lugar aquí y representantes aquí que pueden hablar su idioma. Y estamos aquí para representarlos y para este, ayudarlos en cualquier manera. So just to translate, I, I want to thank all the parents who've come out from Bessie Rhodes, as well as our TWE parents. Again, you have here, you know, people, like, like my colleague Candace said, you have people here who you voted for or maybe not have voted for, but we, we're here representing you. And, and we welcome you in whatever way possible. If you can watch us through, you know, our YouTube channel, our live stream, through the school board emails, through our individual emails. Again, we, we're open to, to, to hearing you out and, and to continue working alongside if you choose to work with us. With that said, you know, again, it's very saddening to hear, you know, some, some of our parents are, are considering leaving our district. You, you know, I, you know, being in this position, you know, it's, again, it's a very difficult decision. I, I said it last week, if I was you, I would be doing, I would be up there advocating, advocating, right, and, and, and doing the same thing. So I, so, so it, it's a very, very difficult decision for all of us, I think, for the administration, as well as, as our board members. And again, there is no easy way to, to, to cut this. What we do know is that, again, the, this is what the research currently tells us, is this is the best model. And we've seen results through our Hispanic Achievement Report, that, that this model has been incredibly successful for, for addressing the needs of our bilingual students. And it, it's mutually beneficial, it's culturally and linguistically responsive, responsive. And it is so exciting to hear what's going to happen in Bessie, in, from my perspective, because we're getting Global Studies. We keep it. The framework, the framework, I, I think, I would like to see it expanded across the whole district. Because in reality, it's, it's a framework that we, that, that our children need in the 21st century in regards to acknowledging other perspectives, working with, you know, collaboratively. Again, you know, given the, 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 the current situation our nation finds itself in, you know, it, it is more than necessary to, to teach our children with a framework that, that encourages critical thinking and collaborative work and, and, and thinking about problems, how they develop and how we can solve them collaboratively. I reach out to all of you, all of you parents, all, all the parents from Bessie Rhodes, as well as our two-way immersion programs to work with us, to ensure that this program meets all of your needs. Again, you know, it's so exciting to hear that, again, there will be a wall-to-wall two-way immersion with Mandarin option and with Global Studies. Again, we listen to you as parents, and, and for me, I mean, again, you know, I, I took Chinese in, 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 in high school, and I took once, you know, one, you know, one year, like in my sophomore year, and I just, again, I got priced out of my neighborhood, I couldn't go to my school anymore in Chicago, believe it or not. But again, I, I so wish I could have continued and been trilingual, right? We're one of the only industrialized nations that, that does not train our, our students to, to have more than one language, right? And I think Evanston can be that, that shining light, that shining school, that, that lighthouse district that can show the country that we have the capacity to, to forge a new path in, in multiculturalism in, in our, in our, in our nation. And again, this is just the first step, and I invite all of you to, you know, continue working with us to make this a possibility. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to just echo what my board colleagues have said, and, you know, we've heard a lot of comments over the past number of weeks about this decision. It hasn't been an easy thing to think about. You know, a couple of things have resonated with me, from a selfish board level, you know, commentary about how this was a decision that was already made coming into tonight, and we, we've already rubber stamped it. I think Stacy, you can probably speak better to it than anybody, that we haven't really let you off the hook easy over the past few weeks with the due diligence of this task. But I really admire the amount of work that you and your team have put into putting this together because it's really left no stone unturned, and it's left certainly some bigger questions that are yet to come. But like Candace said, and you mentioned, this is step one of future steps. The other is just acknowledging again that, you know, there's, there's a whole school community that's been reaching out, that wants to be acknowledged, that wants to be heard, that wants to be cared for. And I think the restorative work of not just going through this process, but, you know, tomorrow morning, those kids that are going to show up to school and need the best possible school environment, the school leaders who are going to be managing something that's not routine with their staff and with their kids and their parents, is going to take a lot of TLC, and they're going to need space to process. And I think it just bears acknowledgement that for teachers, for administrators, and for parents, this is a, this is an adult challenge that most people don't have to deal with on a regular basis. And it's, it's just worth noting that we, we see you, we hear you, and that doesn't make, that doesn't make this an easier decision, even though it, to many, it will feel like we see you and hear you and yet still aren't listening.
Yeah, so I just want to thank you, all the parents that we've seen for the last three board meetings. It's the same ones, and I just commend you for coming out and voicing your opinions and advocating for your children. I've been incredibly impressed, and if it, if it, if it weren't for you, there's so many things that we wouldn't have seen about this decision. And as a, as an individual who learned how to speak English in this school district, I can tell you that sitting here and being able to make this decision is, for me, it's an incredible privilege and something that I think we will look back on and, and hopefully be extremely proud of. And I hope that you will stay and that you will be part of this decision and that you continue to make Bessie Rhodes a dynamic community that it is. And we need you to be part of that. And it's an incredible learning experience for your kids, right? So day in and day out, we tell our kids that attitude is contagious. And so that I ask you that regardless of your feelings behind this decision, that you keep your kids in mind, that you keep your kids in mind in the, in their ability to, to work through not always getting their way, and to also doing something that's right for others. Because like, like the comments that have been made before, this decision has been in the works since 2003, maybe sometimes before some of you even moved to Evanston. And so I, I just ask that, that you consider, that you consider staying, that you can consider making this part of your children's experience. I think that we need you, and I think that you have a very valuable voice to bring to this change. And again, I just, I really thank you, and I think that it's an incredible opportunity for our school district. So as, as somebody who went through elementary school and middle school, I'm incredibly proud of the administrators that put this, this proposal together, and I think that it's really going to help make Evanston an even better school district for, for all of our students, not just for our Spanish-speaking students. And I would also like to state that this isn't a, a black versus brown thing, you know, this isn't, we're choosing the needs of Latino-speaking childrens over the needs of our black students that we are very much aware of and we're very much working towards. So I don't, I don't want that feeling to be out in the community that we're, we're somehow pushing or, or not listening to the needs of our, our, our black students that are very much at the forefront of the, of, I think, everybody who's here at the table. So just, you know, in, in, in the, in the conversations that we have around town, it's, it's definitely something, as a parent of a biracial student, that, student here in the district, that I, I really consider, and I think that it's not, it's not beyond any further discussions that we will have as we develop this, this change within the school district. And again, just thank you, like, an incredible amount of gratitude for all the parents that have been through us with this process.
Thank you. I'll be relatively brief because I think I've expressed this thought in previous meetings, but to the Bessie Rhodes community that have been coming to our meetings and emailing, I hear you. I feel the emotional toll that this is taking on you. I appreciate that. That has gone into many sleepless nights, for I know me and I'm sure other people on this board as well. This is not a decision that anyone here, I should just speak for myself, but I know that it's also true for everyone here, has not come too lightly. And I appreciate the process that you've gone through. That being said, I think that Joey mentioned it earlier, and that, you know, with Bessie Rhodes being a school of choice, that leaves the decision to me to be pretty transparent on how to make that decision. To cause as little change as possible to the neighborhood schools while creating this enhanced learning environment, I think is incredibly important. And that's where I'm coming from, the decision process.
Thank you. Anya, I don't know if you were there and wanted to say anything before the vote?
Um, I just want to echo, can you, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to echo the appreciation for everyone who has engaged publicly, as well as behind the scenes with the conversation. It's taken a great deal of intellectual and emotional and physical energy, and the entire district, I think, has benefited from that. And I, I believe that we are all operating from our, from our hearts and hopefully bringing all of our voices and our, our intellect and our heart work to the table will continue to allow us to keep children at the center and allow us to do what's best for, for the children of District 55 and for our community. So thank you for everyone who has continued to be engaged, and I hope that engagement doesn't stop here.
Thank you. My colleagues have said, I think, most of the, the important points that I was going to raise as well. I think it's important that we understand what this vote is and what it isn't. I know that there is, there are a lot of Bessie Rhodes parents who are in the audience, who are watching on television, who've been coming to meetings, who feel that we're not listening to them, that we haven't heard them. I want to assure you that we have heard you. Regardless of the outcome of this vote, we, the proposal has changed because of the input that you've, you've given us. I think your input has influenced the questions that we've asked of our administrators around this proposal, and we will continue to need to hear you as we go through this transition. In the meetings that I've been in, I've heard from families who are concerned that the current students who aren't part of TWE are going to be forgotten and ignored, and I don't think that's the intention of anybody at this table for that to happen. But we do need input from our parents, from our teachers, on how we can make sure that we're continuing to support existing students and families at the school as we transition this new program in. At the end of the day, I know parents need to make the decision that is right for their children. I hope that that decision will be made with complete and accurate information and after going through some of the stakeholder engagement that is going to be happening. I hope that you will be involved in that, get the information that you need, ask the questions that you've been asking. They're all valid questions, and they deserve answers. So continue to ask them, continue to better understand how this transition is going to be managed, and then make the decision that you need to make for, for your children and your families. I hope that it isn't something that is made just with an assumption that things are going to be awful. Because I think that, as we've heard, there are a lot of great opportunities for the school. There are a lot of advantages to having a wall-to-wall TWE Global Studies school. I think it's an exciting prospect for our district. And, and so I hope over the next few months that you'll hear that before making any final decisions. And I think, you know, as we've talked about this evening, an important part of this going forward is, as a board, for us to monitor how this transition is happening and to make sure that those voices are being heard and that those questions are being answered. Thank you again to Dr. Beardsley, to Amy Correa, to the whole team for putting together this proposal. I know that it was countless hours of work and analysis, looking at every possible option before coming to this one, being so responsive to the questions that you were hearing from board members, from community members. Again, because I think it's worth highlighting, the keeping Mandarin in the school, I think, is such, is the, I, I just think it's such a fantastic option that's going to be at that, the school, and is really going to take what was already going to be an exceptional school and make it something even more unique and exceptional, not just in our district, but in, in the broader community. So with that said, I hope people continue to stay engaged, and, and we will be, you know, continuing to discuss this over the, the coming months and, and monitoring how things are going. So with that, can we?
Can we reread it?
What's that?
Reread it?
Oh, yes, yeah, go ahead and reread the...
I move that the Board of Education approve the addition of two TWE strands to the Bessie Rhodes School of Global Studies.
Second answer.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Anya Houdy?
Yes.
Felburn?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you again to all who have been engaged in the process thus far. Yeah, while we're transitioning to the next, what is the announcement that I need to make about?
There was a massive equipment failure on Channel Six and Channel Nine.
Okay. Okay, so, all right, so for people who are watching at home, we apologize for the technical difficulties that we've been having. There was a massive equipment failure on Channel Six and Channel Nine, but there has been a temporary fix in place, so hopefully you're hearing this right now. And we will have the whole meeting recording with sound broadcast within 48 hours. So we apologize for that delay, we apologize for that difficulty. We are working as quickly as we can to make sure that this is available. So, thank you. We will go on to our next agenda item, the approval of the 2017 Summer Learning Report and Summer School Plan, 2018 Summer School Plan. Sergio, you've got the motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2018 Summer School Plan as proposed.
Second.
Do we have a presentation?
There's no presentation.
Oh, okay.
Same information as we provided before.
Yep, we're essentially asking that you support our recommendation for Summer Learning 2018. We're asking for, to spend $280,000 to support general education summer programming and $294,000 to support special services summer programming. This is a, a small decrease from our previous year funding. Programming is aligned to our guiding principles, which are a focus on literacy and/or social emotional learning, supporting striving students, providing early intervention for youngest learners, enhancing family engagement, yielding data to indicate effectiveness, and maximizing community resources. The programs are run by District 65, as well as some of our important community partners, which do, do include McGaw YMCA, YOU, Fleetwood Jordan, Family Focus, Freedom School, Foundation 65. And we're very grateful for our partner's support in these programs.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments around?
I just have one question, which is on the, page 39 of the packet, but it's really the, the budget, where the funds are coming from. I just noticed that there's been a pretty precipitous reduction in Title I, federal Title I funds, or federal title funds, I don't know if it's Title I or what, Title IX, over, from 15, 2015 to 2017. So we were receiving $111,000 towards the budget, and now it's, I think, $15,000, and I just wondered why that is.
So the shift in funding is actually not related to any real shift in Title I funds, it's actually related to a pretty significant decrease in our state GSA funding. We've lost over $300,000. We've lost over $300,000 over the last three years in state GSA funds. And so, we've needed to do some reallocation of how we cover resources around reading specialists and around additional expenses that we're being paid for, both out of GSA and Title I. And so, what that reflects is that we are needing to spend our Title I funds in other places because of the loss in GSA, GSA funds. And so, we do now fund a greater amount of our summer learning programs out of our general funds.
Thanks, Stacy.
Any other questions or comments?
In general, given the investment, like, are you happy with the number of students or percentage of students that either maintain or increase as compared to those that do not participate in the program?
Yeah, so overall, we are. We do continue to work internally in our own programs and with our partners in ways, to determine ways in which we can continue to improve. We saw a small decrease in the number of kids that maintained or increased this year, but we also made a shift in our assessment calendar that had all students assessed on DRA by the end of September. And so, considering the assessments occurred, that assessment window ended a full month earlier, we think we got a truer measure of summer impact as opposed to somewhat of that fall instructional lift as well. And so, you know, overall, we're happy with the impact in programs, but acknowledge we need to continue to improve. And process-wise, we have some plans in place to also improve our outreach in the programs, to ensure that we really get the right students in the right seats, so we're impacting the students that would benefit from the program opportunities the most.
Thank you.
And when we look overall at, at achievement, the narrative that we use and we embrace is that there are opportunity gaps. And these are providing opportunities, especially during the summer months, for young kids to be able to be, to maintain their engagement, especially in literacy, sometimes in math and STEM, and with, and around a wide range of issues around social emotional learning. So, the, the type of preparation that we want to have a, a young person have running into school in the fall, they're able to maintain a lot of that during the summer.
It's a, it's a wide range of programs for kids, it's very impressive.
And, and that's to the credit of, of our multiple partners, where we can have this sort of dialogue and conversation around the performance, the performance of our kids, the performance gaps of our kids, and then how we provide the opportunities for improvement.
And just for a little context, Joey, you know, whatever it is, five years ago, we had a discussion about potentially cutting summer learning.
Right.
We were reaching 600 kids at $600,000. We're now reaching many more children at less money with better outcomes, you know, significantly better outcomes. And that's because of the partnership in this team that is taking a more innovative approach to summer being about excitement and, and doing fun things and learning things as opposed to it's a punishment, which is kind of the way, you know, the traditional form of you didn't, you, you have to go to summer school. And so, I think it's one of the great, like, the biggest shining lights on, at least as you think of, over the time I've been here, of the shift in approach and delivery and execution. And so, it's, I think it's awesome.
The list of partners itself is the definition of wraparound support and service.
Correct. And I think each year, there's been more, progressively more students that we've been able to serve without necessarily a huge increase in, in our costs. So, it has been an impressive, impressive thing to see over the years. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then I think we can go ahead and vote.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Tanya Houdy?
I don't think, oh, yes.
Felburn?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. And then, our final, or we have a discussion topic, Strategic Plan Progress Report and Equity Update.
And let, just let me start, the, what we present to you tonight is the Quarter One Progress Report for the 17, 18 school year. And as all of the board members know, and I believe folks who are listening in, we take very seriously the enactment of our strategic plan, so it doesn't sit on a shelf, but that it really, we, we drive our work not only based on the plan, but based on the public reporting of the plan. And so, this is part of the regular public reporting that we do on a quarterly basis and an annual basis. And with that, I'll turn to Maria Allison.
Okay, great. In the interest of time, I'll just give a brief intro, because we've done this before. Now, I think everyone's been here for one of our quarterly reports. So, today, we show the quarterly document that we use to track and report on our progress on the strategic plan. In it, we provide summaries, bullet points describing the progress made in each of the five domains of the strategic plan. We use a color key to code our progress. Green means all the milestones were met by the end of the quarter, which would have been September 30th. This is, as Paul mentioned, part of our ongoing cycle, which includes operationalizing the strategic plan into actionable milestones and our annual work plan and the board planning calendar, then reporting on our progress quarterly, also providing a mid-year scorecard on implementation metrics, followed by an end-of-year year-end review document and outcome scorecard. So, that's the context of our sort of planning and reporting cycle. So, with that said, I think we'll just do a quick spin around for some highlights and then we can vote for questions.
So, first category, high-quality teaching and learning. I think three, just quick highlights that I do want to call out. This year, we began offering a greater, a greater number of choice offerings for professional learning for our educators. And this is, I think, exciting for a number of reasons. It represents some collaboration. We have students that are, our teachers that are opting in to take seed. We also created a partnership with National Louis University to offer a multicultural education class. And we have a course that's being offered by our reading specialist, that's accelerated, it's an acceleration course focused on our striving readers. And so, our educators in District 65 received information on these choice options over the summer and had the opportunity to select into these as opposed to engaging in their department or grade level professional learning on the district half-days. And a number of these options are during the half-days and extended time. And educators, because it's a place of passion and interest, have willingly opted in and have taken on these learning opportunities. And so, I think it's a, you know, a place where we saw a voice from our educators that they wanted more choice, and it's something that we're realizing, I think, in a strong way. Second thing to call out is that we have new curricula, clearly, for our new courses, Algebra X, Computer Science, the Social Emotional Learning Class, which is SEAL and Advisory 2.0. That curriculum, I think an exciting piece of that, was developed with an incredible amount of contribution and leadership from our district educators and our district teachers, whether it was social workers or teachers over the summer, collaborating with leadership to develop these courses. We saw, again, great energy from our educators and great commitment to really lift something that was going to support both teachers and students. And so, these courses are all being implemented currently, and we will continue to kind of learn about the courses and monitor the courses through the year. And there's already a commitment from these groups to take that feedback and revise and improve the courses for the following year, as we're all really committed to a continuous improvement model for our new courses. And the last one, which is just kind of always a favorite of mine, is the coaching work that we do in District 65 focused on literacy. We spent time sharing the literacy framework with you guys. You know that this work is critically important to us. It's critically important to allowing our youngest learners to have access to the teaching and learning in our classrooms in an early age and allowing them to experience success. We have five instructional coaches that are really focused on that literacy work, one of which is funded through the REACH Grant and Foundation 65, and so, we're extremely grateful for their support in that work as well. They have, they, they go 12 months in the year for us in many ways, they do the PD in the summer, and are actively doing workshops and job-embedded coaching right now to support the success of that framework.
So, with the thriving workforce, I just want to point out two things very quickly. The first one, just with regards to the professional learning that takes place for our new staff before they begin each school year, we've made some revisions. And one of the things that I think worked out really well this year was having them do full, two full days of Beyond Diversity Training as part of that five-day session, and then still giving them the information that we felt they needed to get their classrooms up and running. There can be an overwhelming amount of information to give new teachers before they start. So, we've tried to really bring it down to a level of what do they really need to be successful when they first start, and where can their mentors provide support, where their principals can provide support, where can they get additional support throughout the year, and what's really most important for them to begin. And because we have this commitment to equity and getting as many teachers trained as possible, we felt that two days should be spent with the Beyond Diversity Training. So, I think that was a, a good change. And then, with regards to the hiring practices, and I know there is a, a large concern over the number of teachers of color, specifically black teachers, that we've hired. And I did just want to point out that this is something that we are all working on, it's something that I'm very committed to. And in some reports that had been provided as FYIs to the board recently, I believe last spring, and then again in this fall, there was an increase in terms of the number of black teachers that were hired over the years. And for this year, for 2017, 2018, 15% of our overall teacher hires were black teachers specifically. And then, we had set a goal back in 2015, 16, after creating the strategic plan, that we would increase the total number of teachers of color who were hired. So, in the 15, 16 school year, 20% of our new teachers were self-identified as teachers of color, and in 17, 18, that was 32%. So, we met the goal, we were trying to increase it by 10%. And we will continue towards that end in terms of trying to have our staff better resemble the demographic of our student population.
Thank you.
In safe and supportive school climate, you know, the items that I have identified here to talk about really are the SEAL class that we started in kindergarten, first and fourth grade this year, as well as the Advisory 2.0, where we have made some changes in our advisory, including, you know, Stacy was mentioning it, fuse executive functioning skills and some self-curriculum. You know, Stacy mentioned it first, we worked very closely in terms of the design of these classes together, in terms of what we wanted to impact, working with the staff in terms of the development of the curriculum, so that it could address, you know, all the needs that we really wanted to take a look at with children. You know, we've only just started these classes this fall, so we're really looking at them closely in terms of monitoring how they're going, what we want to do, assessing the growth of the children within these classes. So, this is really a process, but we're excited about the concept and hoping that this really bears out some, an impact on our students. And similarly, Stacy and I worked together with some of the special ed supervisors to develop more training for our special education teachers, really looking at different aspects where we do some specific training with them. Part of our half-day PDs and Stacy and her team does some additional training with them in terms of curriculum on additional days. So, this is a model that we're excited about and we hope will also impact our teachers and our students.
Before I hop into talking about the specific family and community engagement area, I think one thing to clarify for you is that you saw that this was not just a strategic plan quarterly update, but also a quarterly equity update. This is the same document, and the reason for that is that we don't have two different work plans, we have a single work plan in which we have incorporated our equity work. And as you saw from the response to the consultant's report that we shared with you last month, among the 17 items that the consult, that Cory Wallace, our consultant, highlighted for us as possible actions, incorporated into this work plan is some forward progress on all but three of those. And so, because this format for reporting really works for us and it's integrated into the way, the way that our team works, as you see this on a quarterly basis, our work plan incorporates our equity work, and these updates will also incorporate our equity work. So, I think it's just important to highlight that, since this is the first quarterly update that is really about our strategic plan and our equity work. And we'll have an opportunity in January for you to see the self-reflection that we've been working on, that incorporates sort of our, our reflection on where we are and our vision over the next two and a half years about how the equity and the strategic plan work really build on one another. So, that having been said, in the area of family and community engagement, the first quarter of this year really was focused on beginning the year on a solid foundation in terms of the team who is doing the work and in terms of some ambitious goals to establish a framework for training and professional learning for the year. And we were able to meet those goals. We hired a district translator and we hired a family engagement specialist who has been busy in many of our schools and working directly with our new families, who are new to the district. We also launched over the summer several learning opportunities for our principals. There was a book study on the Courageous Conversations book, there was an event at the shore, where Dina Robinson from the Shorefront Legacy Center spoke with our principals. And Cory began a series of professional learning opportunities for principals that continued into the school year. We also had an opening of schools event that some of you attended with Dr. David Stovall and Dr. Jaclyn Badalora, that was very successful and widely received positive remarks from the teachers who were in attendance. We launched seven seed cohorts that are now on their third or fourth meetings of this school year. And we developed a plan for Beyond Diversity Training for this year. You can see at the time of the, end of the first quarter, we had 200 staff members who had signed up to participate in upcoming sessions. At this point, with several additional BD trainings available throughout the rest of the school year, we've had a total of 350 staff members trained, which includes all of the board members, all of our cabinet members, and all but one of our building leaders who signed up next week. So, we're making fast progress on that regard as well.
Financial sustainability. We take the responsibility to put the district on a, on a sound financial footing very seriously. And in that regard, we also think it's important to be transparent with the way we manage the resources in the district. So, one of the things we, we did in the first quarter is to hold community budget presentations. We held three of them from September 5th through the 7th, where we actually talked to community members who showed up about the, what is in the budget book and the approach that we're taking in managing money and also in allocating resources in this current fiscal year. Related to that, we've started the process for the FY19 budget. And in doing that, we are trying to reimagine the way that we develop the budget, do it in a way where we look at every single resource that we allocate and try to see that resources is in line with the, the strategic plan of the, of the board. And also, to make sure that whatever resources that we spend is actually, is actually in keeping with that and is actually making sure that student achievement is, is the goal here. And we're going to look at it in such a way where if we find a program that doesn't fit into that, we are going to be brave enough to say we need to go in a different direction. So, in doing that, what we're doing right now is aggregating data and using more of the, the data in the district to try to get handle on how we develop the budget. We started that last, in October, and we'll continue that as the, as the time goes on.
Thank you. Open it up for questions or comments?
A longstanding question I've had was partly answered today, because you shared, Stacy, the, the half-day learning plan for teachers. And it's great to have all of the leadership in the district go through Beyond Diversity and be like so many people, part of seed cohorts. And my question's always been, how do you know it's getting down to the classroom level, right? What's the, for, for people sitting around this table to go through it, it's still a distance from the classroom when you talk about equity. And to see the agenda and teachers leading like equity in math class and the, the diversity of names and the ways people are trying to talk about how they can support students, all students, in the various content spaces was really cool. So, thank you for sharing that.
And if I may, we are working with dispatch to build a critical mass of colleagues throughout this district who are trained in perspectives on equity and then who are able to do things like hire on perspectives of equity. That said, there's a lot of ands. And then what do we do in our classroom? And what do we do in the central office? And how do we actually think about how we move the institution forward? We know we have to build a critical mass, but we can't stop there.
Right, and to Peter's comment, the equity plan was always a separate plan. At some point in the hiring and the progress monitoring of everything, you stop thinking about it because it's how the institution operates, right? From, from that lens, from that notion that not colorblindness, not heightened awareness, that it can all be done together and streamlined. And that's a really great direction and step to be taking.
I'm just curious with the, the community participation in seed, if there's been consideration for offering it in Spanish?
That's a really good question. This year, we had not originally planned to offer community seed. We had the opportunity to do so because our facilitators had stepped up. We do have several facilitators who speak Spanish, and so it's definitely something we could think about next year, particularly if we got creative about maybe incorporating, because what we're doing right now is community and staff in the same seminars. So we could have Spanish-speaking staff and Spanish-speaking family members in the same session. So definitely something we could think about for next year.
Yeah, I would consider it simply because a lot of these equity conversations aren't happening in Spanish and because it's such a big part of the work that we're doing as a district, I think it's really important that, that information is translated to, to parents who are willing participants. Maybe if, you know, there, there could be a translator in a session that's not solely led in Spanish. As we have, you know, the conversation that we had tonight, how do we really support and get that information out there so that our community members who aren't fluent in English can be part of the equity work that we're carrying now?
Yeah, I think it would take a little design. Our seed seminars, I'm not sure if you've had a chance to experience one, but they're all-
I remember one, yeah.
Okay, so as you know, there's a lot of dialogue that's an important part of it. And we share a lot of video resources and those are in English. So I'd really want to make sure that we could design something that would be a great experience for Spanish speakers. But I agree that I think it's, it would be a wonderful way for us to, to go and evolve as we go forward.
Yeah, just something to consider. I know that it's been really helpful for me in getting to know different people in our community. And it's, I think, one of the toughest pieces of the equity work that we're doing is giving people the language to have these conversations. And so it's just, it's a segment of our community that we're not empowering with, with that language and those, those skills.
Anybody else?
Just a quick comment for the family community engagement, Peter. So, you know, glad to see that there was a, you know, full-time district translator that was supporting this in Spanish. And, you know, can we get somebody who, again, is able to, again, we've spoken of earlier today by some of the commenters in regards to, you know, families being afraid to approach institutions, given the environment that we live in right now, particularly that's very anti-immigrant. And again, utilizing the translator maybe to, to transcribe or close caption our YouTube channel to, so folks can maybe have access to, to our meetings or at least segments of our meetings, I don't know, I mean, that's accessible in their language, right? So just thinking about it in that, in that sense, you know, when, when we have meetings live, is there somebody that can translate as they go live and then have it as a transcription when it's recorded so folks can reference back to it? And then also, so another issue, another thing too is, you know, looking at current family and community engagement that's built into some of our programs. So when I think of Head Start, our Head Start program has a parent, parent planning council, I think they're called, Early Head Start does as well. So maybe when we think about that, you know, about reporting on our work, on the strategic plan, you know, what can we do to kind of talk about what those specific programs are doing? So again, some of this stuff is, you know, many things that are here are things that are added on, but what can we do to look at community engagement that's actually built in already to some of, some of the offerings that we give into this district, right?
So I like the direction you're going, and I'm not sure this is the forum for doing what I think you're suggesting. What we're trying to do here is to report on the work that we're specifically, the progress of the work that we specifically plan as part of our work plans. I think it might be an interesting milestone for us to consider in the future and then kind of rate it against the other things that we could do, to think about how district coordination of family and community engagement could be helpful. When the strategic plan was originally made, I think a lot of what folks talked about is that there's, the examples you bring up are important. There are similar family and community engagement activities underway in each school. And so a lot of what we try to do is to provide additional supports that makes sense at a district level rather than try to get in and manage the work that is coming up in an organic way at a school level. So maybe there are some things around lessons learned that could be shared across schools around family and community engagement. And certainly Ellen, who is our family engagement specialist, has really found some really interesting and unique ways to engage with families, meet them where they are, and really provide them the supports that they need. So in regard to sort of leveraging what's happening at family engagement at the site level, I think there's some interesting things we could think about doing as we plan future work plans. And in terms of the translation, I mean, part of what we made a decision about is to, to, to make the full-time translator role. And so I think there it's just a matter of prioritizing, you know, where we spend the time of that individual and whether translation in board meetings is the most important thing, other communications, school-type events. So it's certainly something that we could consider. It's just an allocation of that particular resource to this purpose versus other things that are happening in the district. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question on the, the executive function for Advisory 2.0. So as it's being rolled out, how do we get feedback for how that's, how that's being received by both the students and what type of, you know, skills the students are actually walking, walking away with?
So our initial feedback was we had the teachers, the Advisory 2.0 teachers, complete a survey after the first, kind of the way the course is set up, there's a kind of a 20-day window where we really do the kind of welcome to middle school set of lessons. Teachers at the end of that block of instruction completed a survey for us to give us feedback on those lessons to determine how that went and what might need to be changed. As we're going through the implementation, we're visiting Advisory 2.0 classrooms and will continue to engage the educators to give us feedback through survey or focus groups on the courses. The students will also look and probably engage students in a focus group conversation in each of the three big schools to give us feedback on the course. Longer-term outcomes, when we proposed it last year, we said that we'd really be looking at some of the five Es data, but I'd need to go back into the memo to pull up the specific longer-term outcomes. The short term that we're focused on this year is educator and student feedback through focus groups and survey.
Okay, and so with the focus groups for the students, that, those will take place at the end of the school year or when?
Probably about two-thirds of the way through the year. You know, and because there, we've got a set of rotations in place, and right now the course is on 10-day rotations. We're also going to do a principal collaborative where the principals and the, the middle schools are going to gather and visit the classrooms and give us feedback on the experience. And that is in February, I believe. So we'll have opportunity for administrator input through classroom visits as well.
Just two quick questions. One is in terms of the rollout of culturally responsive instruction, could you guys talk a little about that? It's come, you know, came up earlier tonight, and I, I know we are on an aggressive plan to do that, so I'd like, it'd be great if we could share that.
So there are a couple, there, and you can pick up. There are a couple of specific things that we are doing and focused on this year. We, particularly, actually starting tomorrow morning at 8:30, we have, we're beginning a, essentially it's a six-session professional learning sequence with our instructional coaches and our department chairs. The group is about 25 people total, so it's our department leadership and our instructional coaches. The focus of that connected professional learning is around culturally responsive teaching and culturally relevant pedagogy. And the goals of that professional learning are really to arrive at a district definition for those practices, as well as develop tools within the positions of department leads and instructional coaches for effectively integrating that, that approach with their coaching and curricular work. And so by the end of our professional learning, we expect District 65 to have a very clear definition of what those practices are, as well as tools for our coaches to use in the process of curriculum development and instructional coaching support. And really, you know, and I'll use the goal again, is that we want culturally relevant pedagogy and culturally responsive teaching to be embedded in the daily work we do in literacy and the daily work we do in math. And these are our leaders in curriculum development and instructional implementation with our teachers. So I think that this connected series of professional learning that Cory Wallace, Jamila Pitts, and I have been working on developing together, I think is going to be critically important for our capacity. That will move into further influencing summer curriculum work. We did some significant summer curriculum work. There was a project focused on algebra and equity. There were some other things. So that will push into that, and that will also influence curriculum reviews and ongoing curriculum revisions in our work. Jamila Pitts on the second lane has also initiated the beginnings of curriculum review. We're still in the unofficial stage because we'll, we know there's, from conversations at CAC, there's support for that, but it involves moving social studies up into our gap year next year to initiate that review. But her goal this year is really diving into the social studies curriculum, looking at the cumulative projects. We tend to have these kind of end-of-unit celebrations and taking a look at whether they are culturally sensitive and whether they are reflecting a multicultural perspective and working with particularly, I think it's third, fifth, and seventh grade teachers that we've organized in our standing committees to look at those events and redesign to ensure that there's a multicultural perspective. Because the way we have social studies curriculum outlined is we have essential questions and during understandings and the standards that need to be taught with each unit. Teachers then take that information and design the units for themselves. And so this would prevent, not prevent, this would provide a set of kind of resources and opportunities to ensure that those culminating projects are reflective of the diversity of our buildings and don't have unintended consequences in the way that we frame historical events. And so Jamila's working through that with a group of teachers that are functioning in our standing committee structure currently. And we've also worked, presented and shared some of that work with the principals as well as the curriculum advisory committee this year.
Thank you. And then I think the second question is just because I didn't, wasn't, didn't write it down. The numbers that you had said, just because again, this is a really big, you know, key priority is we're looking to further diversify our teacher core. The 20, that in 15, 16, 20% of new hires were teachers of color, and that's all teachers of color, and then it went to 30%. Do you know that broken out for African-American teachers?
I can actually, I can refer you back to a memo that I believe went to the board in September, but I can send you the entire deck.
That's okay. I should, I can look it too.
No, I'm, I, do you want me to right now to tell you what?
Yeah, if you could.
Just in terms of for 2017, 18? Okay, so for 2017, 18, 2% of our new hires were Native American, 8% were Asian, 15% were black, 2% Hispanic, 5% two or more races, and then 68% were white.
For this year, for this?
For the 2017, 2018 school year. So these are the people that were hired this summer.
You don't have right there last year to know if that was accurate?
I do have last year. So last year, 0% Native American, 11% were Asian, 10% were black, 18% were Hispanic, 0% were two or more races, and 61% were white.
So in one year, we went from 10% black to 15% black?
Correct.
Correct.
Would you like 15, 16? I'm, I just, because I have it. So for 15, 16, it was 0% Native American, 7% Asian, 5% black, 5% Hispanic, 3% two or more races, and that year was 8% white.
So it's, three years, we've tripled than the percentage of new hires of black or African-American teachers. Okay, I think that's really important for us to stress in the discussions that we have so people get accurate information. And, you know, we are clearly, we're not where we ultimately want to be, but that is extremely impressive for the work that's been done. So I, I don't, I think that, I don't think that that is getting translated, you know? Clearly, it's not getting translated or, so we need to educate more broadly what's been happening and, and that we have been monitoring it as part of the strategic plan and that there is, there is movement, positive, positive movement in that area and in others, so.
And our-
I mean, I'm sure everybody's not tuning in anymore because they can't hear us, but let's figure, let's figure out another way that we, we can repurpose-
And 60% of your school leaders from last summer that were hired were of color.
And we've trained, Beatrice, Cory Wallace have trained our hiring managers that train in English, that's our principals and our department heads, to think about and engage in the hiring process using an equity lens and, and then to also know our goals around diversity of the workforce while we quest to find the, the best folks for, for District 65.
Well, clearly, this doesn't happen on its own, right? It happened with intention-
No, it's intentional.
And it happens because we set those goals and, and you guys are bringing fidelity and process to reaching those goals, so it's important to shine a light on that. So thank you.
Can I just add one thing, which is that, you know, even the practice of culturally relevant teaching, if we just dove into culturally relevant teaching as a practice where we're going to check off boxes, can be very difficult because without the groundwork for examining implicit bias and really thinking about the role that privilege plays in our society, then all, we can do all the right things in terms of a strategy, whether it's TUI, Du Language, or any of these practices, these pedagogical curricular foci, but it's, it's really important that we create the, the right conditions to create an environment that's attractive and interesting and feel, children feel good about the spaces. And even to the comment about our parents, and I think about the work that's happened with the school climate, it's, it's part of that framework is to really unpack the relationships and help the teachers start to think about the relationships in their buildings and the kind of work that's happening. It doesn't happen overnight, but the intentionality and the direction is really to, I think through the Beyond Diversity work and through this continued examination, will allow more attraction to our spaces and more investment and commitment beyond the technical responses that we can consider that may seem like quick fixes and, boy, you better get them done today. But if we're not paying attention to these other foundational pieces, we're going to be back where we started four or five years ago. So I want to think, I just think it's important that we acknowledge that.
And if we want to build a sustainable infrastructure around culturally relevant curricula, then we wake up at 8:30 tomorrow morning and we have our coaches working with our department heads. And it's, you know, maybe it's not the most sexy work. It doesn't show up here or there, but in the route, but where you are-
Are you selling my opportunity?
No, come on. It's 9:34. Where it is though, is it, it, it's, it's something that you actually said, Stacy, which is that it's in the routine, it's built into the routines of what our, our educators are doing. And that's what will sustain itself over time. And it really is fantastic work.
Extremely compelling.
Well, given that we do have apparently an 8:30 in the morning, I do just want to make a couple of, of quick comments. One around the hiring, I agree that those are some phenomenal numbers that we do need to find a way to publicize better. I do think, and not to be the wet blanket on it, I do think we need to also look at retention numbers with that and make sure that we're not, you know, that if, that we're dishonest about those numbers too. And if we do have an issue with retention, then we can know that we need to work on that. Or, you know, I think to Adelie's point, that creating that space is going to help with retention, but just having those numbers together, I think would be helpful.
I was just going to say, we did look at some retention data and we have not seen that our black teachers are leaving at a higher rate than our white teachers.
Okay, so then I think that's important to note that as we're also hiring more black teachers, we are still retaining what we have so that we are overall increasing the numbers of teachers of color that we have in the district. And then the only other really quick point I wanted to make, I think it's, can you remind me, how many staff have been trained in Beyond Diversity? me, how many staff have been trained in beyond diversity so far in the district?
350.
Okay, so I think that is fantastic, and I know we have more people who are coming up to be trained over the next, you know, the rest of the school year. One thing that we've heard from teachers around, they're excited about the training, but they're also expressing, and I think we've all heard this, a desire for ongoing, the ability to continue to unpack and discuss what they've learned through beyond diversity. Some are able to do that through seed. Not everyone is able to take advantage of seed right away. I know there are some plans in the work to create some spaces at a district level for those kinds of conversations to happen. I would urge you to consider finding school site-based spaces for those kinds of conversations to happen. I think that's going to be, to Joey's point of connecting the equity trainings to the classroom, I think that's going to be a crucial link, and it's something that we've been hearing teachers asking for. So something to think, if not something that we can build in this year as we plan for next year, to make sure that we're creating that opportunity for educators.
Yes, so we, if you look at the work plan for the rest of the year, we do have some staff affinity group milestones in quarter three, and our intent there is to bring staff together, those who have had equity learning opportunities particularly, and give them a chance to work both across all people and then where appropriate in groups of similar racial composition as a way of unpacking what they've learned and figuring out next steps at the, in their own personal learning journeys. And in the school level, the school climate teams are one place where folks have an opportunity to continue that work together in a really specific way. And then I think, you know, we've begun to have some conversations about, you know, where does this work go in the 18, 19 school year, and that may be some opportunity there to do what you're talking about.
Okay, great, thank you. With that, I think that concludes questions on the strategic plan progress report. Updates and upcoming work, does anybody have any reports on committee work? We do have a policy meeting next week and a, the finance committee meeting that was supposed to happen today is going to be happening on December 18th. One other just quick update, we've been talking with our colleagues at 202. We are scheduled to have a joint board meeting on February 12th. There's been a request to postpone that to May 21st because we're waiting for research data from Northwestern on the research project that they're doing for the two boards. So just note that the February 12th joint board meeting will now be moved to May 21st, I believe. And I believe we'll still have a February 12th board meeting. Regular board meeting? Nice try. Well, we'll be in discussion. We'll look and we'll see what we need to do. For now, plan to still have the February 12th board meeting, but as a regular board meeting.
Yes.
We'll see.
We'll see.
Just keep it in until you hear otherwise. With that, I adjourned this meeting at 9:37. Thank you all. If you can remember to please quickly fill out your meeting evaluation forms and turn them into a dealer.